We're going to call this meeting of City Council to order. I'm going to begin tonight with a prepared statement. So please, please bear with me and listen carefully. Members of City Council, Department Directors, Staff, Administration, and Citizens of our city of Buckhannon, good evening, and thank you for joining us. Past 36 hours have certainly presented both our internal organization and greater community with challenges. By now, I'm sure everyone in attendance and watching is aware that Mr. David Walter McCauley has been arrested at his home on Wednesday morning following a federal indictment on Tuesday and charged with both production and possession of child pornography. He is currently being held without bond in the Northern Regional Jail awaiting a pre-trial hearing that is set for Monday, October 7th. All of this comes at the conclusion of a two-year federal investigation first initiated in July 2022 by the Upshur County Sheriff's Department. First, I want to address a statement posted on social media yesterday. That very brief paragraph was preemptive as details were unfolding. I would ask you to be mindful of three very important words in that statement, and they were "at this time." Yesterday morning, at the very onset of this situation, it would have been inappropriate to provide detailed comments. Attempting to remove a seated elected official is an extremely rare action. We need to properly examine the process and procedures set forth by state code that we must follow verbatim to successfully remove Mr. McCauley from office. We have since done so through review, and tonight, the city of Buckhannon is prepared to provide our community with an informative and hopefully reassuring statement of how we plan to proceed as a governing body and as a community. Second, let me be very clear. All of us within the City of Buckhannon organization do not, under any circumstances, take lightly, support, or condone in any way the acts of which Mr. McCauley have been charged. Period. Any notion or belief otherwise is egregiously incorrect. If you are here tonight, or if you are watching the broadcast, and you overhear or see anyone claiming that the City of Buckhannon organization is complacent to or supportive of the acts charged, please correct them immediately. Those acts are vehemently unwelcome in our community by all of us. Third, government entities are not the same as private businesses. Elected officials are not treated as traditional employees and cannot be fired or removed from office with a simple vote or flick of a pen. In a general sense, that is a good thing. But all of us here tonight understand and agree with many in our community that in this particular situation, we wish we could act quickly. The question has been asked why Mr. McCauley was not removed from office two years ago when the investigation first began. The answer is because no charges had been filed. Simply being under investigation is not sufficient enough to begin the process of removal from public office. A motion of the sort would have likely been denied by both local and state court systems, citing an ongoing investigation with the potential result of no charges filed. I will note, however, that Mr. McCauley was asked to tender his resignation from City Council in November of 2022 but refused. West Virginia State Code 6-6-7 outlines a specific procedure for the removal of public officers. Following this during his report, I will call upon City Attorney Tom O'Neill to share the exact process with everyone tonight that the council must follow in order to remove Mr. McCauley from his seat as an elected member of the City Council. Having read and been briefed on the process and procedures provided by state code, I will be calling for a meeting in the upcoming weeks where members of City Council will be asked to support the following agenda item specific to David Walter McCauley, and that is to adopt a formal resolution of impeachment and removal from office. This meeting will be open to the public, and the agenda will be publicly circulated through our regular channels of communication. Per open government laws, this meeting will require the agenda to be posted at least 72 hours in advance of the meeting date and time. That is no different than any meeting that we have. Realistically, we're looking at either later next week or the beginning of next week. It all depends on the information we receive from Monday's pre-trial hearing and the court system. It also could be at our next City Council meeting, which is two weeks from tonight. I promise you, we will move quickly, as quickly as we can. Finally, we hope you understand that we are just as angry, frustrated, sad, and embarrassed as you. Not only has Mr. McCauley endangered the youth in this community and beyond, but his presence on this City Council for the past two years have made all of us uncomfortable and has unfortunately scarred this entire organization of very good, honest, and hardworking people. Our beloved city of Buckhannon is far too wonderful of a place to constantly keep receiving public black eye, or a public black eye by people in positions of influence who have made bad decisions, decisions that hurt our youth and hinder our growth potential. This must stop. If City, County, Education, et cetera, officials are not holding positions because they wholeheartedly love our community and want our collective best interest to be first and foremost, they should not hold office, either elected or appointed. Period. Thank you for your time and for your interest in this matter. We ask for your faith, trust, and patience as we promise to due diligently follow the policies and procedures set forth by state code. We are members of this city just like you, who all want justice to be done and a governing body where all members have the support of our greater community. At this time, we do not know how long the process of removal will take, but like you, we sincerely hope it will move efficiently. We will keep you updated, and should we need assistance from you, our fellow citizens, we will let you know and how you can help. Our community is a family, and together, we will move forward. Thank you. All right. Now, we've called this meeting to order. We're going to observe our moment of silent reflection. As we enter that moment of silent reflection, I would ask that you remember the victims of the hurricane, all from Florida all the way to North Carolina and East Tennessee. We know what flooding is like here in Appalachia. Would also ask that you remember anyone affected by the statement I just read to you tonight. Let us go to a moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. Will you join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did. Yes. All right. We have some proclamations to dole out this evening. So first, I would ask for, didn't we just see you ladies?
It was Jennifer.
I would ask for the Elizabeth Zane chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to come forth as we have the National Family Literacy Day proclamation and the American Indian Heritage Month proclamation. Again.
When did you hear last time?
No, I was out of tail.
All right. It's okay with you, we'll just do the photo ops. Is that okay? All right, I'll let you hold one, I'll let you hold one, and I'll stand here like the thorn that I am. I'll fall roses.
All right, can I get you to look here first, please? Smile.
All right. Would you ladies like to say anything?
We thank you for your support.
Sure, no problem.
We thank you for your support.
Absolutely, we're happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I would ask for the Upshur County CEOs, West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. Does anybody here for that? No?
I'm a CEO, but...
All right, let's do this. Who in here has either, is either a breast cancer survivor or is somebody that's touched their family? So everybody, why don't, everybody who has their hands raised, just come up and we'll take the picture. How about that?
You didn't ask that question. Yeah, why didn't you raise your hand?
See, that's why I knew I had to give shit.
Doesn't have to be a CEO.
No. And you've got your pen on, so. All right, you have everybody?
Look, you said you, can I get everyone to look over here first, please? Smile.
Thank you.
Over here, we don't go to get a look.
Since you're a CEO, would you mind to take that? And I have some copies here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. All right. Good evening, welcome back. We welcome back Wyatt Burns. Greetings from West Virginia Wesleyan College from the Student Senate.
Thank you all for having me again. We're going to switch to a little bit more lighthearted note. While we know that things happen in our community, we also must remember that we always have great things happening. And West Virginia Wesleyan is proud to be one of those great things still happening in our community that we all love. Happening in the month of October, we have Homecoming Week coming up. October 11th through the 12th will be Homecoming Weekend. Our Founder's Day Convocation will be held October 11th at 3:00 PM in the Wesley Chapel. Our Board of Trustees will also be in town leading up to the events and having their meetings. Fall Break will be October 17th through the 20th. Just a reminder, students often go home during this time or take the time to adventure, so the campus may be quiet. Battler's Knob and West Virginia Wesleyan College have recently entered into a partnership. West Virginia Wesleyan plans to explore offering courses, degree programs, and training opportunities in allied health fields and a variety of other areas most immediately needed in the state and region. On October 26th, we will host our Fall Open House, which we will welcome high school students or high school seniors and their families to tour the campus, interact with students, faculty, and staff. We also hope that those students and families will go out into the Buckhannon community, and we hope to see an uptick in involvement inside Main Street and city limits. Campus Life would also like to thank the Fire Department for the recent help with the fire drills in the Residence Hall. Chief Kimball and staff's help was greatly appreciated. Students who violated school policies and unacceptable items, unapproved items, were fined $25 per item. In a trend with recent years, Campus Life staff offered a new initiative to accept canned goods as payment for their fines. This was a time set that if they reached by then with an agreement with Campus Life staff for amount of canned goods to pay their fines, then that was accepted and their fines were waived. This year, in total, we donated over 250 canned good items to the Parish House. Recent events with the CCE, the Suicide Prevention Walk Capitol on September 7th, and we had over 100 participants in the event, ranging from students to community members. Our Speaker Jen Randall Rayes helped us talk about how important it is to understand mental health ideation, especially within our rural community. September 24th, 16 community partners visited campus to engage with 275 first-year students. The students chose from four focus areas: Appalachian and Cultural, Hunger and Poverty, Mental Health and Wellness, and Youth Engagement, allowing them to connect with topics they are passionate about. Each breakout session featured experts who share information about the organization, the community need that they address, and how students can get involved in our communities. Now that students have a foundation and understand a bit more about why service is important and those that help and those that they can help, how to get involved, they will actively be engaged in one or more community service projects as a part of their first-year experience in their liberal arts education. That is required of all first-year students attending West Virginia Wesleyan College ranging from freshmen or transfers. September 30th, Wesleyan hosted the Mountain East Conference Monthly Meeting. Student athletes participated in two service projects. They created 100 trick-or-treat bags shaped like gloves, and they wrote 30 handwritten notes to veterans in preparation for Veterans Day. To encourage voter participation, voter registration drives, and absentee ballot information has been posted around campus, including the cafeteria, to ensure students understand the registration process and other important information. September 26th, over 60 students gathered for a screening of the film "O Pioneer." After the screening, the film's director and one of the featured individuals participated in a discussion with students. Upcoming events that everyone can get involved with? The Spread the Love Peanut Butter Drive is happening through October 14th, hosted by the We lead Poverty Reduction Team, and will be accepting peanut butter donations for the local community. These donation boxes are at the CCE chapel in the library. The Healthy Hero Hustle 5K and Health Fair, October 5th at 8:00 AM. The race begins at 9:00 at the Fountain Loop. A superhero-themed 5K and health fair sponsored by WVU Medicine in the Wesleyan College to benefit the School of Nursing, registration of $35. Hunger Walk will be October 12th at 8:30. The walk will begin at 9:00 at the Upshur Parish House. Students will support the one-and-a-half-mile walk, supporting food and security in our community. We invite you to walk with us, support the Parish House. Suggested donation of $5 for non-Parishable food. Head Start Fall Fest, October 18th at 9:30. Volunteers will be assisting at the Upshur County Head Start Fall Fest. The Upshur County Trails Work Day, students will mount trails to assist in routine maintenance and potentially clear out new areas at the Upshur Trail behind the high school. That will be on October 19th. Truck or Treat, October 28th at 6:30. Students will be assisting the FRN in handing out books to the crowds of children participating in the event. Trick or Treat for Kids, October 31st. Campus groups will be handing out treats to children, trick-or-treating one campus. Also a time-honored tradition, Trick or Treat for Canned Goods, October 31st. Join We Lead Poverty Reduction for a Halloween event collecting canned goods for the local community. If you live in the downtown area, please have cans ready. Students will be coming around if you would be willing to knock on your door and to trick or treat. And instead of asking for candy, our students will be asking for canned goods. These canned goods will all be donated to the Parish House. This will be our 20th year. This is a crowd-favorite event that we started back in 2003. So this will be our 20th year for the event since we missed in 21 duty code, or 2020 duty code. And lastly, the Boy Scout Merit Badge College. We will host the Mountaineer Area Boy Scout and others on campus for a day of earning merit badges. The badges offered will be bird study, game design, electronics, sculpture, first aid, and swimming. We'll host this on November 2nd at the Performing Arts Center. And that's all I have for you, if you all have any questions or anybody from the community.
Thank you, Wyatt. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Next one.
Mr. Ruffin, from Leadership Upshur.
Thank you for giving me time tonight. I know you guys have more pressing matters, so I don't want to take up too much of your time. I'm here for the new City Council members and for existing, just to tell you a little bit about Leadership Upshur and to ask for your continued financial support as our program sponsor for the 24-25 class that actually just started yesterday. I want to first apologize. Normally, we take care of this a lot earlier, but I had a miscommunication, and I thought we had already taken care of it, and we hadn't. So I apologize for being late to the game, because normally, we have this done well before our class starts. So for the new council members and anybody who wants to refresh, Leadership Upshur started two years ago. We started the program because Upshur County didn't have a way for our potential next leaders to really develop skills to help them along their journey. It doesn't matter if those leadership skills are for business use, if they're for volunteerism, if they're for politics. You know, Marion County, Harrison County, Umon County, and Leadership West Virginia have all existed for many years and have been really successful, and we didn't have anything for citizens or people that live or work in Upshur County. So that was really the premise of the program. We spent a long time with a great board of tons of people in the community, from Tammy with the Chamber, Robbie, our mayor, along with numerous others, Brandon Tenny with the UCDA, Kristi Tenny. We have a great board, Rhonda Dimon, Lisa Wharton, Katie Lauter joined the board this year from the Hub. And so we have a really diverse group that put together what I think, in my opinion, is probably the best leadership program for any county in the state of West Virginia. We specifically developed a program around helping the next leaders develop actual tangible skills. They don't just show up and network and eat and drink and just meet one another and meet other leaders and call that a leadership meeting. They actually go through what I would say is almost the equivalent of a college-level course over nine months, where they really get to learn and practice and utilize actual leadership skills. Our first two classes were very successful, and I know that you guys got some information that we prefaced the meeting with that I emailed over, including the first two sets of alumni that we have. And so far, the ongoing feedback that we've used to also make the program better year over year has been that the program as a whole has been a resounding success. Everybody has been really happy, and our alumni have stayed engaged, and every year, our alumni continue their service projects that they started their first year of Leadership Upshur. So with that, I guess that's kind of the program in a nutshell. I just kind of wanted to give everybody a chance to, if you have any questions, if there's anything else that you wanted to know about the program, I'm happy to answer those for you, and if not, I'd just ask for your continued support as our program sponsor.
We, Council, you have on the agenda this evening under F8. The Revenue and Expense Review Committee has met and has referred this to City Council for the possible support for a funding request for Leadership Upshur. The Revenue and Expense Review Committee met on this, the request was approved in the amount of $1,200 for this year. Are there any questions, or do you have any comments for Mr. Ruffin?
You said it's a line life program?
Correct.
When do they meet?
So they meet the first Wednesday of every month, starting in October, and they graduate in June. The only time that that's not true is this year, the first Wednesday in January falls on January 1st, so they're going to be January 8th.
Council members, is there a motion to approve F8 in the amount of $1,200 for Leadership Upshur? Motion by Pam, with a second by Dave, and is, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, or the, yeah, like sign, and it's motion approved. Okay. Very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Okay, that's everybody on the agenda. Now let's go to the sheets. First up on the sheets, signs are, is Bruce Bennett.
Thank you. I thank you all.
You dropped all your papers.
I think my question was answered before I got here, but, I mean, at the meeting start. The question is, has anybody in the City Council been told that the state is forcing you all to change your flood ordinance? I said, I use word "force," not "recommend."
No. There is a recommended, or I'm sorry, there is a flood ordinance model out there that the state has, that the city has the ability to adopt, but the council, it's never been on one of our agendas, it's not come to the council's attention, and we don't have any plans to adopt anything more than what we have.
And I want to, I'm not against tough roads. As I mentioned to you earlier, you all have a 100-year flood plan. I built a 500. And how this got started, I wanted to go to 1,000 here, and I was told I couldn't by your flood ordinance. And that got me involved, and I found out Eagle Ford, I can't. Could you communicate to your coordinator that I'm going to build another house in Buckhannon? Try to. To just deal with facts, and you deal with me, I don't need his opinions. I want to know what the coach says, and I want to go by it very tough. I don't need what he thinks, what he, I want to know, do what the coach says.
Sure.
Not what he wants to know.
Yeah, but as your question, the ordinance that we have is...
I didn't think so. I checked with the state, and they told me that those are the laws.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Getting closer to fish time.
I come empty-handed, I'm sorry, I didn't bring any fish with me. But I had tickets, obviously, you're okay. First, I want to say, seriously, thank you, Mayor, for probably the best well-said, well-stated statement that I've ever heard. We appreciate that you listen to the citizens. It's been a tough situation that's rattled our community for over two years, so thank you very much. I don't think anyone could have said it any better.
Thanks.
With that being said, next Friday, October 11th, from 4:00 to 7:00, is our first annual Fish Fry fundraiser. It's at the Bicentennial at the Peak Pavilion from 4:00 to 7:00. Tickets in advance are $20. They'll go up the first of the week to 25, mainly so we can keep track of, you know, how many and make sure it's an all-you-can-eat, which I don't know, there's not much all-you-can-eat out there of anything that I've seen. So the menu, in case you haven't seen it real quickly, is whiting fish, french fries, hush puppies, a small ear of corn, homemade coleslaw, dessert, and bottled water. Kids dinners are $10. We have tickets available at the Chamber with Tammy and her staff. They're at Mama Roma's Italian Restaurant, they're also at the Bicentennial Inn. So if you, I have tickets this evening, but we hope you'll come out and support it. If it goes well, we'd like to do it again next year. Next year is our 10th anniversary for 2025, so this is kind of a fundraiser so we can do more things for the community, hopefully that's free. We have some things in place now, so we just need to help fund that. We don't like to always have our hand out, we'd like to give back to the community. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to let you know. Any questions? Hope to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Carrie, you're up.
Yes, I'll buy a pack.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. No problem. Does anybody from the VFW wish to speak?
I'm with the VFW Post in Buckhannon. Thanks, Freddie, opportunity to be here and talk to you about the post. As you're aware of, the VFW, American Legion have organized the Veterans Day Parade the last few years. We didn't have the staff to do that. When I contacted the city, you guys were quick to respond with, we're going to figure something out. I believe that has happened, and just want to say I appreciate it. Couple things to put out, the VFW will still do its luncheon after the parade that's open to veterans and their families, and the auxiliary is primary on that. And also, for the flood victims, hurricane victims down south, the VFW will be open every day for the next two weeks from 11:00 to 1:00, and 4:00 to 6:00 to accept any donations, and we're doing that across the state, and then we'll be delivering that down south. So, I don't know, Carrie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I missed a little bit of what you said there, but... I missed a little bit of what you said there, but the luncheon will follow right after the Jawbone. I understand the parade committee is organizing something for Jawbone, so we'll follow lunch just like we always have for a number of years at the VFW, open to all veterans and their immediate families. So last year, we fed about 200, so look forward to it again. And thank the community for stepping up.
Absolutely.
But Cannon is always amazing, they just always step up.
Briefly touch on this. So I want to thank the West Virginia Strawberry Festival Association, and also thank Becky Westfall from Just Cutting Up on Main Street. They have worked together and are working together to put on our community's Veterans Day Parade this year. It is, Teresa just let me know before this meeting started, the good news is, is everything has been submitted and it's been approved, so we're all good to go. We've got the state permit to close Main Street because Main Street is a state highway. I know we forget, our community forgets that sometimes, but Main Street between here and the courthouse is technically a state highway. So everything has been taken care of. Teresa did a great job here working at City Hall with the Strawberry Festival and with Becky. So thanks to everybody who came together to do this, so we're looking forward to it.
Are you looking for monetary donations or other types also?
No, sir.
For the parade.
For the parade?
For the parade or for the, for the guests?
For down, for down south.
We can't take monetary donations, yes. We've been accepting them, sir.
Thank you all. That is everyone who circled, yes. So I believe we will move on and consider public comment time closed. So we are down to our department and board reports. We first welcome our Public Works Director. Bless you.
Thank you.
Is he hiding? There he is. Good evening.
How are you all?
We're doing well, how are you?
Good. The street department has been working on the city park. They began painting the basketball court today, sealing the basketball court, and are going to continue with that with the nice weather. That'll be the last phase of that project besides some touch-up work around the construction site before we put the posts up for the Pickle and Basketball Courts. They also completed another set fours on Ritchie Street. We got about a third of that project completed now. And they've been working in the PSC on some projects for the fire department, some general maintenance. And I see the milling machine on the way here. East Main Street and Franklin Street will be closed Monday from 8:00 to 5:00 for milling and preparation for paving prior and the week following. And the ways the new garbage trucks that order have arrived, they are at vendor, being vetted and assembled. We have an appropriate extension till April 2025 for the transfer station to continue to operate it. Sewer's been making some taps for new properties. Lower Drive is continuing to move along. We have about 500 feet of that project left of gravity main, and we're continuing to work on a secondary port wire we have. Water is also continuing on Island Avenue. They have just about completed the A-line, they'll go back and start making some taps and they finished about that project. And they've also been working on some feeders for the dark line. For the engineering, FEMA generated grant number two, the approval letter for FEMA to install fence around the street was approved and will begin next week. Stalker Youth and Community Center, the replacement of the gym's tile floor is currently out to bid. The bid opening is October 28th, 2025, 1:30. And we are looking at the installation of the new floor in mid-December to January of 2025. And the WDVOH has a program on Port Avenue. We are awaiting the fully executed agreement and the, I just received from the DOH. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for our Public Works Director? Nope. All right. Thanks, sir. Next is our Finance Director. Here she is.
I'm there with traffic jam. Okay, we'll give your balances for the month of September. General Fund Money Market and Checking, $1,164,000. Historic Landmarks, $3,037. Stalker Youth Center Capital Campaign, $460,000. That includes a $12,000 pledge. Coal Tax, $59,000. Municipal Stabilization Fund, $924,000. Flood Control Project, $78,000. Consolidated Public Works, $131,000. The Cemetery CDs at $235,000. Sales Tax at $1,781,000. American Rescue Act, Plan Act Funds at $202,000. Opioid accounts, $113,000. For revenues and expenses for the month of September, and that's a type of the August, September, is revenue for $556,534. That's up a little bit because we received $348,000 from the Upsher County Sheriff's Taxes. Expenditures were $404,966. You'll note in there a few, your bills to be approved are normal bills, I'll just point out a few that are a little different. $2,100 to Tractor Supply for a police department gun safe, that was part of accreditation, they had to ask some extra storage for those guns. $4,000 Benjamin Airsmann for Boeing and City Lot, and then $2,700 to Appalachian Equipment for a fret guard for the street department excavator. Then a couple other items I wanted to report on, well, Stalker has their list of activities in the packet for the month of September. There were about 1,800 participants with the various activities they had throughout the month of September. The USDA Stalker Youth Center building that we've been working on, we're continuing to chip away at the items needed as part of the letter of conditions that's required by the USDA. We have to get those met before we can even begin to send out the RFPs for, to banks to get interest quotes on the interim financing. So there's several items that need to be addressed. An appraisal, to get an appraisal, we had to get an appraiser that was approved by USDA. They've got that in their hands right now, and then once that's approved, then they can send the appraiser out to appraise property. Deposit agreements, some deeds, some evidence, a fidelity insurance coverage, among other things. So we're just working on this a little bit at a time. Bond Council, Steptown Johnson Tom Ament has drafted the preliminary bond transcript, and he has it in a share file so that the USDA and city officials can access that to review. So if you want to look at those documents, let me know. I'll either send them to you in the zip file or get you access to that share file. Under the water project, of course, we're in the preliminary stages of that project, but we did apply to West Virginia Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council for some, for funds, matching funds, $150,000, $75,000 from the Water Department, and $75,000 requests from the IJDC. That funding was approved, so we have to fill out some paperwork for that to get that sent, and Jay got that to me this morning, so we'll have that taken care of probably by tomorrow. And I believe that's it, Mary.
All right. Any questions for Ambie? I don't think so. Thank you very much. Captain Joey Paxos here with us this evening.
Good evening, council, how's everybody?
We're well, how are you?
Going very well, going very well. Got a few items here tonight. First off, you'll find your packet, the call volume for September here today, everything's holding pretty true, just how it has the rest of the year. Any questions about that before I move on? I spend a lot of time there. All right. Good deal. We're working on pleading, retrieving a flashover simulator from Loudoun County, Virginia, that is being donated by the Loudoun County Fire and Rescue Department. That was donated through some efforts with a good friend of mine, the battalion chief of Chief of Training there. Just like to thank him for that and for their hard work on that. It should be here sometime in the next couple weeks. We're estimating to have it all put back together and operational within a month. The nice thing about that is, what I don't think a lot of people realize, that'll give us the ability to have live fire training earlier than when we'll have the bigger facility completed. That will actually allow us to meet the requirements by, so for having a training facility. Because we currently are in the process of building a three-story structure, which almost has openings in it that will take us to the third floor, so that checks that box, and we will have a live fire facility. So we could potentially get our, get our training grounds credit for 2024, so that's a pretty big step, actually. Next, we're still working on that three-story tower. It'll take quite, it'll take quite a bit for it to be completed. I just got an estimate back today that'll allow us to complete the first floor by parts that were in excess of $70,000, which the money is currently budgeted for through a variety of sources, including county commission, the city, and our volunteer fire department. We had three arson fires in the month of September, which I think just bears note that at times it does rear its head here, and I just want to continue to make you all aware of it. I don't believe they have apprehended subjects in all of those, but I do know they have one arrest through the State Fire Marshal's Office. We, just to make you aware on that, we actually do have a firefighter that has his fire investigation training and works hand-in-hand with the State Fire Marshal's Office, and that's Lieutenant Tanner Smith. Just to ask everybody in the community to continue to be aware, as you know, we just had some recent rains, but those, that moisture will wear off and we'll be back to dry conditions. So be aware whenever you're burning, if you're inside the city limits, we ask that you give us a call for a burn permit for the city ordinance. Outside of and including those same city residents, it's limited to raw wood and vegetation materials. It has to be between the hours of 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM currently, and that'll last you the first of the year. Next week is fire prevention. We crawl across the United States. We will be visiting all the elementary schools in our first new area, the head starters and daycare facilities. We'll do in excess of 1,300 kids just next week. So that's a pretty busy week for us, a pretty exciting town. I've been working with firefighter Shane Jenkins on revamping our fire prevention materials. He's done a really good job, and I look forward, look forward to seeing some of the reactions from the students where they get some of the new items. A couple other items that Chief Kimball asked me to bring up tonight that have been a mind discussion as we move forward, potentially in the future with hiring some additional staff or if we have to replace some staff. He would like council to discuss removing the requirement of applicants having to have firefighter one certification. We're getting to the point that we can train our own applicants and hires, so that might be worth doing. That's something that I would definitely support myself as well. And then the last thing is, he would also like in the, in the next few months, council will look at and discuss the current living requirement, and if there's anything that needs to be done with it prior to advertising again for hiring. So we may be able to expand our pool of applicants there. Do they have any questions about those items or anything else?
I was just going to ask them, arson, are they all structured fires or?
No. Two were structural, structural related. One was exterior of the structure on porch. One was a garage, and then the other was stacked materials at an industrial yard.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, they usually average a year.
Yeah, I really don't have that statistic. I probably should have tonight, to be honest with you, since you mentioned that. Yeah, I'll definitely ask Tanner that and JB to relay that on because that would be, it does vary. I know, given the COVID, we actually had a higher incidence of arson fires, and actually it was kind of sad juvenile fires that became an issue for a while ago.
Have you identified who the arson expert?
I am unaware of the ongoing investigation. I'm not privy to that. I know the State Fire Marshal's Office has an open investigation, they're working with local law enforcement.
But Tanner is involved in it?
Yeah, Tanner's involved with that as well as local city PD.
I need a little more detail on the prerequisite training that you want eliminated?
Okay, so for years, whenever I was hired, back in 2004, or 2007, for example, sorry, we did not have to have to have any training to apply, nor to get hired for the city of McCann. A few years back, I don't know exactly what year it was enacted, it was put in place because there was some question as to whether we truly had the ability to take somebody who had zero fire experience and train them up to the level of getting started in an adequate amount of time, because as noted, we only have one year to get somebody trained before they are supposed to be off of probationary status. That's first aid code. So with that, that was a time crunch for us, we did not have a live fire training facility, and at the same time, we don't have a adequate, well, I don't say adequate, an excess number of staff on duty throughout the day to handle that training, plus make up for being down a trained firefighter. As we've grown in staffing and now we have a training facility, the capabilities are a little, little more in line with being able to bring somebody on with their training.
No, no, I get that. Thank you.
You mentioned the living requirement.
Yes.
Does that have anything to do with our latest hire by any chance?
No, it does not. It has nothing to do with any, any in particular hire, just I surely don't want that to be misconstrued that way. Just looking at full of applicants and the amount of applicants that we have had apply in some areas that we might be able to draw from, you know, currently it's 10 air miles. We've had people in some areas of Barber County, Randolph County, towards the Upsher County line, and not as many in Lewis County, but more in those two, two general areas that have expressed that that was their biggest hang-up in applying. You know, just, just to add to that, I would ask council to remember that, you know, that is, in some cases, what we rely on whenever we're off duty as well. So we're talking search capacity as well as applicant pool.
So our latest hire, how that's working out?
He is working very well. He's been, he's been a, a very good young man to bring on. We're happy to have him, and I think he'll have a very prosperous career for us.
What would be your recommendation for the number of miles?
I really...
What would be the max?
I, I really don't want to give a number tonight. I surely have some things that you could sit down and look at sometime, as do some of the other crew staff, and I'm sure Chief Kimball. It's a delicate balance. It really is, just as I said. I mean, if I was looking strictly at applicant pool, I may go a little further. If I'm looking at search capacity and the amount of time it takes them to come back in the event of an emergency, that may cause me some pause to serve the sheriff.
On the agenda down below here, F2, you'll note, is fire department related. Are you prepared to, you want to talk about that? That is the approval of physical, medical, and mental health examinations for volunteer fire department members as per the Buchanan Fire Department Chief's, Chief Kimball's advertisement regarding accreditation policy and programs.
So just to give some background on this piece that he's asking for approval, part of the accreditation model does ask us to look at the health and safety requirements and obligations we have to our members. Cancer prevention is a big thing, and early identification is big in the fire service because of what we're exposed to, as is a host of other things. There's also some physical requirements, like yearly physical requirements, that it would be good for us to meet. What Chief Kimball is purely asking for, currently as it stands, my understanding, I was not involved in these conversations, was that he would have to come back and ask for each one of those individually every year, because he's asking for that payment for volunteers. They do the exact same job that we do whenever we get to emergency scenes, therefore, they're to be looked at the same way through the accreditation model. What he's asking for, or what has been laid before you, would allow him, by your all's vote, to basically offer up, not require those things out of volunteers, but offer up payment for those services as we have done in years past. But again, no volunteer would be required to, it would just allow him to do the same things that you all already do for the crew staff, basically, is my understanding.
I make a motion. Okay, that was easy. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? I think it's great.
Yeah.
No brainer.
No brainer.
Yeah. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like on the post.
Who's seconded? Seconded.
I don't know. Who?
He did, Rob did.
Rob, okay. See, I, we've moved people, now I don't, I don't know, I don't know the voices yet, so.
He's very quiet.
I know. Unlike you. So.
Thank you.
You'll pay for that. Karma.
Yes, you will later.
All right. Any other questions from council or anything from your side?
I don't think so.
Or are you going to go ahead and talk about, there was another one earlier on? F4, do you want me to hang around for that?
You can, yeah, if there's any questions. Mr. O'Neil will cover that here a little bit. I would ask Mr. O'Neil to come forward, as you'll remember in the statement I read at the beginning of the meeting, I alluded to Mr. O'Neil having the exact way forward for us that he has compiled, which we very much appreciate his efforts in working on this project as well. So, Mr. O'Neil, hello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pleased to be with you tonight. I wish we were under different circumstances, however, it's important that, that the council receive counsel on how to move forward in light of the developments over the last couple of days, which certainly weigh heavy upon the hearts of people in the community, across the community and in the city hall as well. In light of the unsealed indictment of Councilman McCauley, I've been asked to brief council with respect to what steps it can take going forward, what options are available. Again, just as a reminder, my role as the city attorney is to advise you on what your legal options are. It is not to, at least in this forum, it is not to express my opinion on what you should do, merely what you are legally enabled, empowered to do. The presence of a federal indictment changes the situation from what it was prior to the announcement earlier yesterday. In particular, while an indictment does not carry with it a finding of guilt beyond a reasonable doubt, what it does establish is that there is probable cause to believe that a crime has been committed and that the accused person has committed that crime. Probable cause, meaning it is more likely than not that these, the things that are alleged to have occurred, had occurred. That's the legal standard by which a grand jury, but particularly a federal grand jury, operates under, with respect to the issuance and the burden of proof that it has before it can issue an indictment. So, for purposes of council's acts, what it can, what it can do at this time is assume that it is more likely than not that the allegations that have been lodged in this indictment are, are correct. And on that basis, it's my opinion that the council does have the legal authority to take certain action in response. There has been some discussion about removal, and that's certainly the farthest, that's the outside limit of the council's power in this situation, is to seek removal of one of, of one of your number among the members of the council. There's a process by which that is done, which I'll, I'll go through. There's certainly shorter other things that can be taken, but I think it's important to note, for the benefit of the public and for the benefit of the council, there is no provision in state law, city ordinance, or the city charter that enables anything like a suspension, or a suspension with or without pay, or anything like that. That's not contemplated in the law. And so, it's my opinion, at least in present, and this is a, this is a new topic for a lot of us to deal with. So, there's always, there's continual kind of research and reading going on about these things. But our understanding is, at this time, that the council's options with respect to a response are to seek removal, or to wait for resignation, or to wait for something else to happen, I suppose. Whatever council does, it is still, it still remains bounded by the constitution, the U.S. and state constitutions, the West Virginia State Code, including the Open Governmental Proceedings Act, and in its own, in its own statutes. As I said, there are some things that the council can do short of removal, such as expressing your opinion on the matter, although I would urge you to be very guarded and careful about not stating things that are outside of your individual direct knowledge. I'd urge you to remember that there are pending very serious court proceedings that are in process now, that the accused has rights, and that I don't think any member of council, and certainly no member of the city administration, will have to do anything that could compromise the integrity of the federal investigation or prosecution. That that is not, that is not the role of the council to take a role in that. With respect to removal, as Mayor mentioned in his opening statement, West Virginia Code 667 provides for the removal of public officers. Let me mention one thing, too. There is a section of the city charter, Section 10 of the city charter, does include some language that deals with removal of members of council. It has to do with attendance at meetings. In researching this question for tonight, there is some Supreme, State Supreme Court opinion that states that any removal procedures that a city, that anybody undertakes has to be in compliance with West Virginia Code 667. So, to the extent that if the city were to rely on its own city charter, I think that would stand a likelihood of being challenged on ground of sufficiency based on those other previous Supreme Court opinions. So, my recommendation to council is if it desires to move forward with the removal proceeding, then to do so within, again, within the auspices of West Virginia Code 667. That provides that a removal process can be triggered by filing of a document with the circuit clerk down at the Upsher County Circuit Court of a, of a petition or resolution calling for the removal of an officer by one of, any of three groups. Either the county prosecuting attorney can do this on his or her own initiative, a group of qualified petitioners, which would be voters from the city voters, the number of those in this case would be 85. So, if a group of 85 registered voters in the city were to get together and sign a petition and have that filed with the circuit clerk, they could initiate that proceeding as well. Or, in the third case, the city council itself, as the, as the governing body of the, of the government where the officer is sitting, that is, whose removal is being sought, can, can do it. So, clearly, that is within your ambit, is to consider a removal. Now, the resolution needs to be, it needs to obviously be in writing. It needs to state with particularity the, the facts that establish the cause for removal, the grounds for removal, and, and obviously, that's identify the, the officer whose removal is being sought. If that resolution is adopted, within five days of adoption, it has to be served upon the circuit clerk of the, of the Upsher County Circuit Court. The circuit court would then set a preliminary hearing to determine the legal sufficiency of the resolution. That is, either Judge Hall or Judge Reader would take an initial look at the petition and make sure that it kind of passes muster legally. If the judge were to find that it did, it would be forwarded on to the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals. The chief justice of the Supreme Court would then appoint a three-judge panel, three-circuit judge panel, who would then initiate a hearing, and there would be all kinds of process that would be associated with that. Call in witnesses, evidence, and ultimately, they would render a decision. That decision could then be appealed to the state Supreme Court by an aggrieved party. It is my, there are a couple things. The removal, the basis for removal must be, under state law, must be based upon acts that the accused committed while he was a member of the governing body. So, items that may have been, things that may have been done prior to, I guess, I guess it'd be prior to July 1st of 2022, would, is not grounds for removal. For that reason, I would, I would suggest to the council that the grounds for removal is the fact of the indictment itself. That, that if the, that if council were to have grounds, those would be the clearest grounds. Then it becomes just a matter of establishing the fact of the indictment. Now, there are kind of legal complications that are associated with that that we don't have to get into right now. But the point is, this is not a, this is not a, this is not the kind of thing that you undertake lightly. It is done with an extreme amount of seriousness. It will require an investment of significant amount of time. It's probably going to require the involvement of, of other people as well, as far as witnesses and so on. But nevertheless, if it's the council's desire to move forward, we're prepared to, I'm prepared to undertake that. That's the, that's the process that's laid out. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them the best I can.
And just for, just for the audience and public's understanding tonight as well, the reason we cannot officially take action on this tonight is the agenda, we have to post the agenda 72 hours in advance of a meeting. This happened yesterday. We, we were unable, per state code, to adjust the agenda that soon before this meeting. So, that's why we had to schedule a meeting in order to do this. But, so we can't officially take action. There is no resolution tonight, but after speaking with my colleagues on council, and they can weigh in if they, if they choose, I believe it is the, it is the will of this council that we, we unanimously wish to proceed with the resolution.
Well, I will prepare, I will begin the process of preparing that resolution, and it will be ready as soon as you want to consider it.
Okay. And again, we can't, we have 72, we have, everything has to be, for the open government laws, we have to schedule a meeting, it has to be 72 hours post the agenda.
And I would also, this is not, it's not a criminal proceeding. It's, it's, it's more akin to a civil proceeding, but it's important to remember that the, that Mr. McCauley has rights, right, due process rights, even in this proceeding. He'll have to be afforded the opportunity to present his side of the case if he so chooses in furtherance of protecting that due process right. So, this is a, this is a pretty formal process that would kick off here. Just want, shall be prepared for that.
Why do you say it's not a criminal proceeding?
Well, because it's, because the removal, because there's no, because there's no criminal, the penalty is limited to removal from office. That is not a criminal, that's not a criminal punishment. And the court has said, the Supreme Court has said that it is not a criminal proceeding. It's, it's, I guess they call it a quasi-criminal proceeding, but it's, is, but again, there's no punishment that the city can impose, aside from withdrawing the, the public office.
Punishment's a result of what happens with the defendant.
Well, I mean, the criminal proceeding, the indictment is a criminal, absolutely is a criminal proceeding, and there are criminal punishments associated with it. You know, doing this, and often what happens is that bodies will wait until the final resolution of a criminal adjudication before it will make, make its determination on, on something like this. But I understand in the circumstance, the desire for a little bit more alacrity.
And Mayor, you're saying that we'll have a meeting next week, or?
It could be the following, we need, we, we need to follow the process, and, and there needs to be communication from, from, I mean, following Monday, following the pre-trial. We need, we need to, Tom needs to receive the indictment so that we can, you know, have it in writing and know what to include in the resolution.
And I don't know if that's been published, I don't know if members of the new meeting here have access to a couple, if you'd like to share a comment. I'd appreciate that.
And the meeting will be open to the public.
Absolutely.
Of course, it's open. It's an open meeting.
Will you have it here or at the safety complex?
No, we'll have it here.
And again, this would all be short-circuited if Mr. McCauley were resigned.
Right.
That would immediately moot the consideration.
Right.
So, as council, as we go along with these proceedings, the resolution, not revolution, resolution, that would not preclude the community members-
From filing their own petition?
From filing their own petition.
No, not at all.
They could still do that.
They absolutely could. They absolutely could. I would imagine that those proceedings would probably be combined at the circuit level.
Would it speed it up if we announced? Okay. Why don't, why don't ask, right? And that's what, I mean, that's part of like-
The petition, I mean, whoever, whoever wants to run the petition drive still needs to draft a petition. Make sure that the petition itself complies with the law. Make sure that it gathers signatures from qualified city voters, and that the number of qualified city voters is the, is the lesser of 100 or 10% of the number of candidates to ballot in the election at which the removed person was elected, which would be May of 2022. So, that, we, Andy and I communicated with the county clerk-
You said 85?
Well, it's, there were 846 city residents that participated in the May 2022 election. So, 10% of that would be 85. So, you'd need 85 residents to sign a petition, city residents, voters.
Right. That was fairly low turnout, wasn't it, for the election?
I think so.
Yeah. The off-year elections are always a little, a little bit less than, than the presidential years. Okay, Tom, thank you for that information.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Let's go to correspondence and information. City Hall is accepting, accepting applications for a clerical position. We have the Make It Shine event at the transfer station that is 444 Mudlick Road. That'll be on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You must be a customer of the City of Buckhannon's Waste Department to participate. You don't have to be only a resident of, within the corporate limits, but you have to have an account and be a, a customer of our, of our system. We do not cover all of Upsher County. Their mountain state waste comes in to certain portions of our county. So, you must be a, a customer of ours to participate. Well, repeated again, Truck or Treat is at the Public Safety Complex on the 28th, and Trick or Treat Inside City Limits will be October 31st from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. We have a tire collection event at the Public Works Facility that's across, across Mudlick Road from our transfer station. That'll be, that's at 395 Mudlick Road on Saturday, November 16th. That'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And, we have some, we should have, we should have had her here. I didn't, I didn't even think about it. But, West Virginia Living Magazine, we all, we're all familiar with West Virginia Living. They do a great job. They highlight Wonder Women around West Virginia, and our very own City of Buckhannon firefighter and paramedic Maria Potter was highlighted as a statewide West Virginia Living Wonder Woman. So, we congratulate Maria. If you see her out, make sure you congratulate her for that accomplishment.
Well, she should have been here.
I know. Okay. Under the consent, do we need to break this out? No, okay. Under the consent agenda, you have the regularly scheduled, the regular meeting minutes from 9:5 and 9:19, and then you have the special meeting on 9:04. We have also the approval of building and wiring permits, and also the approval of the payment of our bills. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Rigor, is there a second?
There is.
Second by Mr. Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign a post. Motion carries. All right, we have the, oh, Andy, I should have done this when you were up there. I don't, I don't, I didn't even think about it. We have F1, the approval of our financial statement, which ends 6:30, 2024. We have F1, the approval of our financial statement, which ends 630, 2024. She's still out and about?
Still.
I should have, I should have done this when she was standing up, but I, I didn't catch it.
Let's go back to it.
For the Make It Shine, just a quick assembly, my husband works out there, you have to be a weekly customer, not the someone who takes a Barbie deck and pays-
That's true. I didn't think about that.
The dollar bag or whatever you have to do.
If you receive, or if you receive our little square bill, so.
You can do that even if you charge out there, reaches it on.
So, okay.
So, you have to be a weekly pickup customer.
You know, every year, we get the questions on, or we get the complaints on Facebook and in here, "Why can't I do this?" Do you want to, is there anything you want to talk about, about the financial, the statement that ends 630, 2024?
Oh, no. It's required by law. I mean, it's going to be published in the newspaper. I think they delayed it till the 9th, I believe, of October, and it'll be in the newspaper.
Okay. I didn't know if there was anything specific you wanted to highlight. It was pretty, it's the standard, it's the standard financial statement that we-
Revenues and expenditures, and then it has our vendors listed, and it's a thing we publish every year with a list of the vendors. Aggregate of anything paid under $50 is just listed as aggregate.
I would, I'm a big enough.
Okay. Thomas has motioned that we approve the financial statement for 630, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zuliani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. I have two ordinances to take a look at this evening.
Sorry?
Are you ready for 469?
No. I didn't, okay. We saw first that, we asked that be tabled again.
Okay.
Until the survey from Patesta comes back.
All right. We don't technically need this, but we've done this so far. Is there a motion to table until the survey results come back from Patesta?
Sure.
We have a motion by Thomas, a second by Buckle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. We have F4 and F5. Do you want, anything you want to highlight?
Well, I will, I'll mention, F, ordinance of 471, which is F4, is unchanged, the draft is unchanged from the last meeting. It's, it's up for first reading today, but ordinance 472 needs, I still need a little bit more direction on the rate structure for the commercial side. And if you want to keep those, keep these two ordinances running parallel to each other, I recommend, time is not a, time's not a factor yet to get this in place and effective by January 1st. You may choose to table at least-
Let's, let's do that. Let's not table. I, I, I want to make sure that we continue to communicate this correctly and consistently. Let's, let's get together. We need, we need to think about yet another meeting, about getting some of us together, maybe with Ambi and, and some members of our fire department, too. We need to put in writing the rate, because remember, we are changing our, our rate structure from a gross receipts model, which is, which is grossly outdated, to a square footage model. So, and then, and what does that look like? So, we need to do that. So, so our homework here is between now and the next meeting, we need to have, we need to have a meeting so that we can, we can have that for our, for first reading.
Are we going to be asking the county commissioners to join us again, or stuff?
No. We still need to schedule a meeting with the fire board. Remember, we had a, we had a public meeting at the, at the convention center with the Fire Association, that the fire board has asked us for a meeting, we need to do that as well. Meetings, meetings, meetings. So, we'll get some meetings scheduled between now and, what's, what's, so today's the 30, is it the 19th, 17th? So, between now and the 17th.
Robbie, Robbie, I still get phone calls from individuals that don't understand the concept of the first due. And I simply point out that we believe that the individuals living in the first due area, and it's a state requirement that our firefighters are the first responders for first due, they should pay the same as the citizens, residents of the city. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple to me.
All right. All right. Well, we will, well, we will continue our discussions. Okay. So, I entertain a motion that, actually, no, I will not. Let's, let's just continue the discussions on, on F4 and F5, and then we will bring those to the table, both for first reading on the 17th. Okay. On F6, we all know, we're very excited, we have a new business coming to town, and we've, we've entertained her, and we've had her here, and she's, she just loves our community. But Prime Six is on its way to Buckhannon. They will be here at the end of the month, and what she would like to do is to have a bit of a town hall meeting, just to answer any questions or get any feedback from the community that folks might have about Prime Six coming. It is a, it is a charcoal alternative company. They will manufacture charcoal out of wood chips and sawdust. It is a sustainable way forward. It is, it is environmentally positive. It will be located where the, in the former Novellus property, or the former Moore's Business Formers property, for my cousin in the back of the room who, who would remember it that way. So, that's, that's where it will be. They will begin, hopefully, with around 75 jobs, and they are going to expand from there. So, this is a positive for our community, but we need to hammer down their date as to exactly when they're coming. It will be at the very end of this month, and we will communicate when that town hall meeting will be and where it will be, and if anybody has any questions, they're urged to attend that meeting. And also, come support. We, we don't want to just be, you know, only people coming to, to, to ask a question. We want to be there in support, because 75-plus jobs in a small community is, is a big deal. And, and there are, there are several of us who worked very hard to get this business here. So, we want to make sure that we keep putting our best foot forward. She really likes Buckhannon. We want, we want her to make, we want to make sure she continues to, still like Buckhannon. So, stay tuned, we will communicate when that town hall meeting will be, but just wanted to put on everybody's radar here tonight. We are down to council comments and announcements. We will begin over here with Mrs. Buckle.
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rigger.
Um, I haven't.
I like the way this is going. Mr. Thomas.
We'll all change that whole thing. I, I think the beginning statement that you made in the regard of the meeting was excellent.
Yes.
Very concise, straightforward, and I really appreciate what she said, and I imagine the work with Tom, together, put that forth. But it was very, very positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zuliani.
Just like, echo the same sentiments. I was impressed by the statement, and just know that we're going forward, we're on the same page, trying to be as efficient as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders had to attend a funeral in Nashville. He is flying back. He was on for a little bit, but he boarded the plane and is en route to Pittsburgh, so we will see him tomorrow. So, he did participate for the beginning of the meeting. He was sad, he could not be here with us this evening. I just want to say, I appreciate all of you. You know, we are a little bit of uncharted territory, but I appreciate the confidence that you have in, in our body as, as leaders and in myself as, as the mayor. And yes, we will, we will get through this, and we will do it the right way, so.
It's nice to see Pam back, too. She absolutely has been. Hopefully.
Better hammer.
I hope everybody will, if you can, attend the Forest Festival this weekend. We invited Mayor Marco to be in our parade for the Strawberry Festival, and so he reciprocated and invited me to be in the parade over there. So, I'll be in the parade and, and the Forest Festival on Saturday with the Buckhannon Band and the Strawberry Festival, so I'm looking forward to that. So, if you're, if you're headed that way, come by and wave.
You going to be marching, or in a c-?
Oh, I'm walking. Just like I did here. So, although I don't quite, I don't know that there's going to be as many people to hug over there as I do, as I do here, so.
Are you going to bring the missus with you?
Oh, yeah, missus will be here.
Is she walking, too?
Um, I think for part of it. She usually-
She sure wears sneakers.
I better be careful.
Get out of the heels.
All right. Thank you all. I entertain a motion that we adjourn at 8:21. All right, thank you.